To do the flag salute, I want to just recognize one person, this is the first city commission meeting, I believe, since we, since Jim Abashan passed away, I believe that was since the last commission meeting, and I wanted to just take a minute and have a moment of silence for Jim, and just recognize his efforts in the community over the years. Thank you very much. Please join me in the flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, do we have anyone here in attendance this evening that would like to speak on any item under public input? Alright, seen none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed this evening?
I'd like to remove item B, as in boy.
Any other items? We have a motion to approve with the exception, or with the exclusion of item B.
So move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B, all votes in favor?
Ray?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ketterman?
Aye.
Munsell?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Alright, item B, Patrick did you have?
Matt, do you have something for us on this?
Yeah, so, within the, I believe we had a typo, within the deposition of bids, that we had typed in a dollar eight per square yard to award to ProSeal out of El Dorado, Kansas, and their actual bid was a dollar seven a square yard, which is still underneath our engineer's estimate, so, we'd like to recommend award to ProSeal at a dollar seven a square yard for asphalt rejuvenation.
If there's no other issues, I move to approve.
Alright, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded to approve item B of the consent agenda, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Next item, Point Royale Loan, Consider Staff Recommendation to Modify the Loan Previously Granted to Point Royale Development, Inc., in the Amount of $300,000, to Replace Point Royale Development, Inc., with the Newly Created Entity for the Development Pittsburgh Highlands LP, With the Terms and Conditions of the Loan to Remain Unmodified. Becky, go ahead.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you very much, you may remember, a gentleman named Tom Carlson with Point Royale Development came here to describe his low income tax credit development to you, he was awarded those tax credits, so that will result in 20 single-family homes, they're three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage homes, they'll be located between Atkinson and 31st, on the east side of Michigan. Upon receiving the notice that he received those tax credits, then, the next step is to put all of the pieces in place to start building in Kansas. And the first thing that a major developer of this scope does when they begin a new project, is they create a new, single-purpose entity, for the purpose of that project alone, that keeps all of their different developments separate. And so, Mr. Carlson created Pittsburgh Highlands LP for this purpose, and, in order to keep our municipalities' records clear and concise, we thought it was appropriate to come back before this body and ask for the approval of the same loan, same terms, for the same purpose, under the name Pittsburgh Highlands LP. And just as a reminder, that is a loan that is $300,000 with a 0% interest, it will be paid back over a 15-year period, it allows us, the City of Pittsburgh's, to be first on the mortgage for all of those homes, and we're only going to convey that loan up on a certificate of completion of the project.
Becky, just one question, we just got a revised, what's the revision on that?
That's the next agenda item.
Okay, so it's not the same one that we're looking at now?
Correct.
Okay.
So I know you've built in the protections relative to us being first, preferably, we don't want to be at that point, so, do we feel confident, in terms of the financial backing of this new entity, behind the scenes, so we don't have to get to the point where we're exercising our rights as first?
From, from the position of Director of Housing, I feel confident in that, for a number of reasons, one is the due diligence I did on the developer, before even engaging in these kind of conversations, you know, talking to other communities where he's built, talking to the Missouri's, Missouri's equivalent to our Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, whose name I can't remember right now, he's been in good standing there, looking at the Missouri Secretary of State, he's been in good standing there, he's built in Iola, and in Montgomery County, and I spoke to government officials in both of those locations, and they're all very pleased with the work, everything worked the way it was supposed to do. And then also feel confident, because it's the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation that granted him the tax credits, so their application process is much more involved than anything I asked for, that we reviewed, but I feel confident that they would not be providing those tax credits, had they not done their due diligence as well.
Becky, how long has he been in business?
I believe that he has been developing, under several entities, right, because they, create new entities for each development, for over 30 years, I want to say 45 years.
Something like that.
He resigned being an acting attorney 45 years ago, and began developing 30 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to clarify, the $300,000 is EDAC money, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I will move to approve.
Okay.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item A, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion carries. Next item, Resolution Number 1197, Consider Staff Recommendation to Adopt Resolution Number 1197, Determining That the City Is Considering Establishing a Rural Housing Incentive District Within the City, And Adopting a Plan for the Development of Housing and Public Facilities in Such Proposed District, Establishing the Date and Time of a Public Hearing on Such Matter, And Providing for the Giving of Notice of Such Public Hearing.
Okay, so that we're talking about the same development, you may remember back that we established a large rural housing incentive district, at the, I believe we received word from the Department of Commerce, it says it in here, February 17, establishing over 320 acres within our community to be a rural housing incentive district, this is the first project within that district, and this resolution is the first step in establishing that project. So the resolution before you outlines that we have, have negotiated a development plan, and a development agreement with the developer, Pittsburgh Highlands, and that those two documents will be on file in our city clerk's office for public inspection, for the next 30 days, and it also establishes a public hearing, on October 24th, here, where public might be able to give their input on those documents, and then, should everything remain in order at that time, we'll pass step two, which is an ordinance that establishes the district.
Okay, to John's question, was there anything revised in this document that we were just handed that was different?
The only revision that you have there, Mayor, and Commissioners, is actually in section three regarding the public hearing, the last sentence is new, it just makes sure that this resolution complies with the applicable statutory language.
Okay, alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded to approve item B regarding Resolution Number 1197, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, Becky? Item C, Engineering Services Agreement, Wastewater Treatment Plant Preliminary Study, Staff is Requesting Governing Body Approval of the Engineering Services Agreement with Earl's Engineering and Inspection, Inc., in Amount Not to Exceed $80,000, In Which Earl's Engineering and Inspection, Inc., Will Develop a Preliminary Engineering Study of the Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Good evening, there's Commissioners. So, a little over, probably a year ago or so, you remember that we started discussing TMDLs, Total Maximum Data Loads, on our wastewater plant facilities and nutrient studies, and we'll be getting a new permit for a wastewater treatment plant, in April of next year, which will start outlining and, and what we're to monitor and follow in those changes, it'll be forthcoming, we know the regulations are going to get worse. So we, we discussed with Earl's Engineering, starting to lay out that preliminary process, for capital planning, just looking at our data, so, Pete, I'm, Mr. Earl's, Pete, is with us tonight, so he came back, and he gave us a larger scope of work, to really, to really talk through all the steps of, what's it look like today, what's it look like a little further down the road, and what's it look like to plan, in the future, for those engineering services. He came up with a scope of costs for about $80,000, today, we don't really need that, what we're asking for today, is to continue to engage his service, but today, we're asking for, to move forward with your blessing, to start, start that research and discovery phase for us, to evaluate our plant, and our needs, our current conditions, our capacity levels, and bring that together as a deliverable, for today's needs, and then, we'll start stepping through future, maybe broaden the scope as we go, if that's a fair term. And so, what we're asking for today is to move forward with the first, a first phase of his first phase of preliminary study, to begin the collection, data collection process, if you will.
What, what percentage of the 80,000, are you asking us to approve up to a certain dollar amount, or what?
We're trying to, we didn't want to, when we get into too small of amounts, and we stack them on each other, it kind of loses transparency with the community, because we're asking, if it's under 20, we don't even have to come to you, so, if it's 23, what we decided to do was, we just looked at the overall scope, it'd be 80, the two deliverables that are currently going to be done, right now, were total 20.
It, it's actually 13, 944.
13, 944, so what we'll do is, we'll, you're approving the overall contract for 80, we'll do these first two pieces, when we get the deliverables back, we'll come back and then report them to you, we'll make the payment at that time, but that'll make it, otherwise, we could do the 13 without coming to you, and then, all of a sudden, you may see something in, after we've gone down to phase two or three, and you're like, how did we get here? So we just thought we'd bring the whole 80, say this is the engagement to take us all the way through, but we're just starting with this first piece, and we'll bring it to you when we're done.
Develop, develop our capacity, and, and, you know, just recognize what we have today, and where we move forward with.
And we'll have information, as we move along on this?
Absolutely, as the deliverables are done, those reports will be turned into us, Matt will come back, probably with Pete, we'll, we'll present them to you, what we found, where we think we're heading, and it'll just build from there, but this saves the...
What's the timeframe for the whole process?
The whole, the overall process?
This study, or whatever.
The current, what we're asking, what we're asking for, right now, from Pete, is about 60 to 90 days, for those, for those deliverables, for him to, obviously, a lot of it's going to be information data, that we're going to have to help him put together for us, and the review of our facilities, and those type of things. Overall, the $80,000 part of his whole scope, we don't even know if we're going to get there yet, but, we don't have that, there's a couple of other things, you know, we're going to, we're just going to step through this, if you will, and make sure we reach our goals as we go.
But we do know we're going to approve 80,000, but we don't know...
I don't know if we're going to get there, there's, there's different, there's different phases broke up within the scope, and there may be some that we do or don't need, within that, but we're, we'd like to step, we want to present to you that, we know what it looks like, on the horizon, and we could get to that point, but we want to show you that, we want to start with the deliverables, and, and where we go from there, so, as we get our, as we move forward.
Well, as future studies, are any, including any, like, expansions, or?
Yes, it'll, it'll kind of, a piece deliverable will be, you know, our current facilities, what our capital needs would be, within our, as we do it today, what our capital, you know, our facilities don't get newer every day, they, they continue to deteriorate, and those type of things, so including with, future changes for, for regulation changes, and stuff like that, of what, what are options, where to best utilize our resources, and what, what our needs will be for expansion, or for current capacities, and what those, what that will entail.
So, if you don't know how much you need, how did you come up with the 80,000?
No, no, we have it broke down, we, we do have it broke down by phases.
Think of it like this, Commissioners, today, we are asking you to approve a contract for $80,000, it has a complete scope of work in it, we are not, we will not be coming back to you anytime soon with $80,000 worth of invoices, we are going to do this in pieces, the first piece that we know, which is very concrete, are these two reports, for 13,000 and X dollars, and there'll be two deliverables, but this builds on each other, so for right now, we didn't want to engage Pete, without knowing what an up-to amount would be, and since it's 80,000, four times the threshold that we could do, we thought, let's take the whole thing and get it approved now, so you guys, everybody, the city, and everybody knows what we're working on, knowing that, quite frankly, there's a lot of things in play, with other communities around us, as far as this, that could affect it, that may change it, so we may come back to you after these first two deliverables, and say, okay, we know more information, and adjust it at that point, but we thought the responsible thing to do is come in and say, we've looked at this, we've gauged it, it's 80,000 for this body of work, even though we're just ready to do these first two pieces, that's really, I know it's confusing, because we don't do it like that, but it's the most responsible way, rather than coming in piecemeal, and having you go, well, why do we keep giving Pete $20,000 contracts every six months, and it's like, well, let's just do it upfront, it's for 80,000.
It's part, it's part of a bigger overall study.
You know, personally, I think it's, 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 it's certainly shows to be above board, to do it this way, inasmuch as, you could have signed this contract for under $20,000, and it wouldn't even have to come before us, is that not correct?
Correct.
So you could have incrementally done this, but you chose to come to us, and show us what was on the agenda.
That was the intent, we, we just, when you plan a new wastewater treatment plant, $40 million investment, that may serve as a regional plant, there's going to be a lot of decisions and a lot of design time, and right now, we're just at the beginning of that, but there are some things we know we need to do right now, that we can knock out, that'll probably take three months, that'll put us in a better position, because the clock's always ticking, and, it's, Pete's a great engineer, we have a, a great contract...
He is, he is one of our on-call engineers.
Yeah, so he's already...
That is the other part of his service.
You've already authorized that we can do that, and, we just, it's time to start, but we may have things that change as time goes by, and so...
Thanks for explaining that, Darren.
Sure, you bet, it's, I know it's, it's not confusing, it is different than, we brought you stuff in the past.
I'd echo Patrick's comments, too, it makes sense, now that you're explaining how you're doing it, as long as you guys are just coming back, and we'd like to be updated, which you guys are already saying you're going to do, so I mean, that...
Well, we want to step through the deliverable process, to know where we are, you know, and if, if something outside of our, our scope changes, or a major, you know, or it's time to accelerate some of those processes, I mean, you'll know what's, what's coming down the line.
And with those updates, I don't know if you can just keep, when you give an update on, when you finish phases, if you can tell us how much of the 80,000 has been exhausted, so we know where we are in the remaining balance, anybody have anything else?
If there's no further questions, I move to approve.
I second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all votes, to those in favor of approving item C, sorry, I had a little moment there, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, Disposition of Bids, Bids Were Received on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, For The 2017 Street Improvements Project, Staff Will Provide A Verbal Recommendation To Award The Bid.
So this afternoon, we took bids, for a project, rather large project, and I give you, everyone should have a copy of the award memo, we received two bids today, the lowest being, excuse me, Hecker Construction, with a bid of $498,322.74, they have done work in the past for us, they've recently just completed the East Fourth Clink Project, this project will be, south Ralph's from the railroad tracks to Centennial, Centennial east to the city limits, there's a section down West Mill Road, and then, and then Hobbs and Place and Drive, is what this project entails, it is a mill and overlay project, with a little bit of concrete work in between, but, the project did come in within our estimate, and they are to be completed before the end of the year, if we can get the weather to cooperate and everything to go the way we want to, so...
Matt, is there any issue about just having two bids?
No, no, their bid actually came in below our estimate.
I, I can see that, but that's not what I'm asking, basically, I'm, we only have two, two bids here.
Is there some reason we don't have five bidders?
Is there?
No, we asked for a timeframe to get it done this year, we wanted the project to be, we wanted the project to be done, in coordination, before the South Ralph's, the big South Ralph's project goes, and before the county gets their bridge open, we thought it was a good time to grab that, and because their prices came in lower on the East Fourth Clink Project, we were able to increase the scope of work of this contract, out to bid for yet this year. We did have one contractor that had too much work, Blevins did notify us that they wouldn't be able to bid, but I'm not concerned, because the numbers that we received today from Hecker are in line, almost exactly with the numbers that we received from the East Fourth Clink Project, where we received three bids, from Blevins, APAC, and Hecker. So they're, they're consistent in their pricing, from the last time that we received three bids.
How many quest, requests did you send out, Matt?
We sent it to, at least five contractors in the immediate area.
Matt, on these projects, are they going to be finished this year, or we're waiting on the county bridge, how long is that going to put us back?
No, we're not waiting on the county bridge.
So, you could start Centennial if the bridge is still out?
Oh, even better, less traffic, oh yeah, yeah, no, the goal is to award tonight, and be under contract within a week, and, and start getting, getting everything moving, so, we should have, I mean, we still have two solid, good months of weather, that you can do asphalt work, without, you know, unless, I mean, of course, we put it out to bid, and two hurricanes hit, so, we're lucky that it didn't drive up the price of fuel, and so I'm really impressed in, in the pricing, in that module, that it, it hung tough.
So with the bridge being out, there'd be less traffic using Centennial going south?
Going west, or east, either way.
I got, I'm, I was thinking about South Ralph's project, not the Centennial, can you start that, with the bridge still being?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
If there's no other discussion, I move approval of, of disposition of bids.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Move on to non-agenda reports and requests, Director of Finance, Jamie Clarkson, will provide the August 31 bimonthly budget review.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, this, this report is, I'm just saying what I want to say, this report is as of August 31st, which is two-thirds of the year, everything, expenditures and revenues is in the green, now you may say, what am I talking about, because there's some, some expenditures that are, that are greater than 67%, but those are, those are because of debt service payments that were, were due on September 1st, the general fund, we paid this building off, and the fire station this month, so, we're debt-free on this, these two buildings, the debt service fund, basically, it's the last debt payment of the year, I got a little one of 7,000 in October, I got to pay for yet, so it's about done, so, those are skewed, because of the timing, and when the debt payments are due, with the state, and same way on the public utilities, the utility portion of debt, I had to pay some money for September debt payments as well, so, if you take those out of the equation, we're well under the 67% on the operating side The, the sales tax collections through August, were up 6.49%, that's the, I believe it's the fourth month in a row, where we've been up significantly, we had, I think, two months at seven, around seven, and we had one at five, and now we're back up to six and a half almost, so that's good news for the local economy. Gaming revenues, so far through the month of August, we're, we're averaging $25,000 a month for the year, since its inception back in April.
Where did we, where did we originally?
Guesstimate.
Guesstimate?
I plugged in, I think, 250,000 for this year, because, I really didn't know at the time what we're going to get, so that's, I think it's going to be a little lower than that, but for next year, I, I think I had 325 in there for the 18 budget, so, I'll know more after these winter months, when it gets darker, see if the activity picks up, so to speak, I just don't have enough data at this time.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm still pleased with the, the results we're getting, though, so...
Jamie, you talked about paying this building off, and the fire station building off, and I guess maybe this is for Sarah, but, shouldn't we have some big news item about this?
Well, I would think, yeah, probably a good idea, I told Mandy, today we probably ought to have a mortgage burning party.
I wonder. And Mike's going to be there to put it out?
Yes, we'll, we'll do an article on it.
That's a big deal to pay off these bills.
Yeah, and it's one, it's one year early, as well, and, on a side note, I, I got a notification from the state, effective October 1st, the sales tax in Pittsburgh's going from 9.5 down to 9%, one-quarter percent drop, as promised, so...
9.5?
No, 9.25, down to nine, nine even.
I thought you said 9.5, too?
I'm sorry.
He did.
I transposed.
He got excited. We're saving tax, it's a big deal, I mean, to think that we paid this thing off, and that we are dropping the sales tax for people, it's a, and if you look around town, I think you can tell, the service level, hopefully, that the city's providing, isn't dropping accordingly, so, it's, it's, things are going well, and, to the casino, I would add, I think, you said 350,000 next year?
I can't remember offhand, it's 325.
About 30,000 a month, is really probably what we were expecting, and right now, we're getting 24, 25, 26, so, it's right there.
That's an average.
That's an average, and it's the first four or five months of operation, so, we are definitely doing what we hope, which is, we're getting some money to put into reserves, and not having to raise the property tax.
And, and October 1st, with the sales tax going down to 9%, we're actually picking up an extra quarter percent for the street improvements projects, so, you know, like in 2018, we'll have almost $2 million to work on the streets, in the community.
To that point, will there be, an update, I know, I know we've kind of gotten an update during work sessions and stuff, in terms of where that money would go to, if we had an extra quarter, quarter set, but is that going to be an update, that we can maybe get in the next month or so, in terms of where those projects will be, do we have that figured out?
Yeah, we were hoping to do it, this final contract is probably through November.
Right.
So, assuming we get the weather, what we usually try to do at the end of the year, is give you a recap of what was done, and then give you a look at what's planned, and if Matt's up to it, I'm sure he is, then that'll...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But it's good, I mean, it's, as you can tell, the road, there seems to be so much traffic, that the roads are, and that extra million dollars is going to be a big deal, because, there's a lot of cars on our roads.
So Jamie, on the sales tax being high again, I know initially you'd said that part of it had to do with, like, new construction on the casino and such, do you have any speculation about what might be driving it to continue like that?
All, all I can speculate on is, is that we're having more sales within our city limit.
Seems like a sound assumption.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, keep in mind, the growth in the last few years, has really been on the campus, so, you know, that's not really going to affect it, now you have a casino, that's not exempt, they're creating sales tax, you have, I mean, it seems like, a lot of these restaurants that opened three or four years ago, that everybody said aren't going to make it, are still open, it's just...
Manhattan was full the other night.
Eventually, it's going to catch up, and I think this is the first year where you're seeing, you know, there's, that's why you try to grow businesses, and, you know, and get people to move to your community, because we fund everything through a sales tax, really that matters, and, this is luckily, the first year that it's, you know, I can't you say, I, I just don't think you can say it's all the casino.
Not at this point.
But it's a heck of a combination that's working for us, so, it's some stuff.
Is there anything we need to approve, or anything?
No, it's just informational, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie, any other non-agenda reports or requests?
I just wanted to echo your thoughts on Jim Abashan, I know Jim was below... I just wanted to echo your thoughts on Jim Avashon. I know Jim was beloved by the university, but the things he did in the community from serving on the commission, I think he was a two-time mayor. Lately, he was the executive director of the Highway sixty-nine, has been responsible as much as anybody for the progress made there. I just wanted to make sure. I know to me, in my short five years here, he's been a very good friend. He's been a mentor to most of the people that he meets, and he was a tough guy, and he fought a hard battle, and I'm glad I got to know him.
We would echo that.
That's all I think we've got.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We are adjourned.